Can you see and hear? Okay, let's go ahead and get started. This is Jefferson Township Board of Trustees Virtual Regular Meeting. It's Tuesday, May the 4th, 2021, the time's 7:01 PM. We'll get the meeting started with, uh, pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, we'd like to have a moment of silence to honor the military, firefighters, road workers, and sheriff deputies as they serve our communities here and abroad. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Tracy McGuire.
Present.
Tracy, ma'am.
Present.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Present.
Okay. Next on the agenda, a report. Uh, review, eighty minutes, seeing as there are none. We'll move on to fiscal officers' report. Ms. Edwards, you have the floor.
Okay, um, I sent you guys a monthly, uh, report from last month in your email. Um, also, I sent you in your emails the reports of appropriation and revenue reports, uh, comparison of budgeted and appropriated, and, uh, summary, summary reports. They usually come in the hard copies in your packet. I sent that as another ta- email attachment, so you should have those. Uh, just loving if you got any questions on those. Um, also, I'm gonna bring back what I brought up in the, um, in the work session about the OPERS and OPMF, a retirement plan. Um, those, that money needs to be, a report needs to be generated and so that, um, I know what the cost is gonna be, so I know what I take out of to pay the, the invoice to those two funds, OPERS and OPMF, the separate retirement funds that the township has, if you're not aware, trustees. And, uh, we be taking money out of the employees' checks to pay for their retirement plan when they retire. And it needs to have a report done, which the administrative assistant did in the past, and then I paid. She would give me the reports and the, and the invoice per se, the form that I have to submit to, uh, those, those two to pay tho- that money that's been taken out by PayCorps. So it gets taken out during payroll. A percentage of the, each person's check is taken out during payroll to go to the pay, um, retirement plan. I just need to know what that amount is, the total amount, so that I can, um, charge it to the fu- appropriate funds and send the, um, payment.
Tracy, is that something that, i- is that something that PayCorps can, um, t- take care of?
PayCorps does not, um... We, we have to, we can't give the time sheets to PayCorps. They have to, they have to enter that information, then they do the rest. PayCorps calculates the amount, all the checks, and then they provide that data. They provide it to the administrative assistant. She, um, input the reports into OPERS or OPF as appropriate, and then she provided me the forms to pay.
So, and you said, and I think you said after the end of the month is...
I don't know if, um...
So after the end of the month, um, there's a heck of a fine or a late fee for this or something? We need to do this, we need to get on this pretty quick, right?
Thirty days after the first, uh, one, one, one May, or whatever Monday was, I guess they'd give us the three. Thirty days after that. If we don't get it within thirty days after that, we get a fine. Anytime afterwards. After thirty days, as soon as, whenever it's submitted, and we'll get the fine.
Hmm. Well, we gotta get somebody to do it.
I guess so. Go ahead.
We gotta get somebody to do it. I mean, it's gotta be done. Any ideas, trustees? I mean, what, what we gonna do here?
I'd like to field the question with PayCorps because you're gonna have retirement, different retirement plans as a line item on the payroll, so I don't know why they couldn't add that to it.
There's, uh, only one, only one retirement, OPERS. And there's, I'm gonna say, 'cause I don't know, eight employees on OPERS and one employee on OPMF. So there's only two different retirement plans.
So there's a form...
Steve, uh, you...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Steve, have you addressed that issue with PayCorps in some of your discussions?
Yes, I have. Yes, I have. Um, they are checking to see if they can change their normal, uh, re- response, which is no. They do not produce the two reports, but the two reports' data is out there as soon as payroll is done. It's just a matter of somebody knowing how to input it into those two spreadsheets as, uh, the fiscal officer just explained. Um, but, uh, when you are signing it and cutting the check, those signatures come from the fiscal officer, uh, not the payroll clerk or whoever else is doing the work. So PayCorps can provide that information as soon as payroll is run. It's just a matter of who you trustees want to input the data because the signature is not the employee.
The signature, I don't have to sign anything either.
So this is just strictly, uh, so this is just data entry, right? Oh, I mean, so you're taking the information that PayCorps provides?
You're correct.
Doesn't sound that difficult. Like, it sounds like we're making a mountain out of a molehill.
It shouldn't be any harder than putting the data, than put the, that's inputted from the time sheets from PayCorps, but I don't know. It may be a little bit harder, but I've never done it. I've never had to do it. We always had hired, had hired administrative assistants that did that job, 'cause they were payrolls and benefits clerk, as well as whatever else they were assigned to.
And we're gonna hire, we're gonna hire replacements, yeah, we're gonna hire replacements soon. So this is just a temporary thing. We need to find somebody to do some data entry, to stick some data in there, um...
Get with payroll, uh, with, uh, PayCorps and, uh, Tracy and, uh, see if I can, uh, come up with what was, what's needed here to be done, and then I'll report back.
Ma'am, so we can't delay, we can't delay it too long, so you're gonna report back at the next meeting as well, just so?
Yes.
Okay. And we need to make sure we have that on the agenda because that can't be delayed too long. We'll be in two, in two weeks into it. Okay, um, again, as I always say, um, we gather, uh, get it... They send them to you guys. I try to get them back to me as soon as possible. I understand there's some, you know, issues that we run into, but we also gotta be mindful that there are, um, I don't wanna say suspense date, what, due dates, um, on these deals. And we get penalties, whether small or large, they add up. Um, and they also affect whether we can have accounts with these people if we don't pay them on time. I mean, everybody should know that. Okay, and the same thing with a business. Um... We just stop the way to do so. We also have lowest credit card account and O'Reilly's credit card account that I'm aware of that the auditors question, um, why we, we don't, um, talk about. The only credit card we talk about in our credit card policy is the fifth third credit card, but we should be addressing all credit accounts that we have. And I understand Mr. Mc- Trustee McGuire had brought up about redoing the, um, credit card policy. And you do think about that. When that time comes, we need to address all of our credit accounts, not just, not just, um, the fifth third credit card. So I wanted to bring that out because that was something the auditor... Um, brought up. Uh, okay. Okay, so the next, my, my, has... Um... I already brought up about the, um, the re- meeting recording and the resolutions, so I think that was basically all I had to say. Um, and there, and again, as I said before, there are checks that need to be signed. And again, be, be, get in my, um, that, um, amendment for me?
Okay, on the amendment, is the president, uh, gonna be the person that signs for us, or do we all three need to sign that document? There's only one signature line.
Right, and there was only one signature line on the, um, original one and the amendment that you signed as well. So just sign like you did on that. If you need me to put a copy, you guys just sign down to each other, and you just put your signature down under there. You know, you did that on the first two documents. There was one for just the original, and then there was amendment, and now this is the second amendment. So everybody signed all of those. I can send you a copy of those if you'd like to see it, but yes, everybody did sign them, so I suggest we just... I suggest that we just do the, be consistent and do the same thing.
Okay.
I can swing through and sign that.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee, anything else, Tracy?
Um, no, I, I'll get the resolution for the last meeting's not in there yet, so I'll get that along when we get these other resolutions done at the pass. That's it.
Okay, would a trustee like to make a motion to, uh, approve the report and pay the bills and warrants?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we accept the fiscal officer's report and pay all the warrants and any bills that we have.
Thank you. And was that a second from you, Mr. McLaughlin?
No, but I can make it. I'll second that.
Okay. Okay.
Since he won't say should.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee, ma'am?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes. Thank you.
Good. Uh, before we get into whole business, Chief Wright, are you gonna have to leave the meeting before, uh, department reports? Unmute?
No.
Okay.
I'll be here.
Okay. Okay, whole business. Minute project, uh, work session. Do we have any further discussion on that? The only thing I have to say about that is we can have the transcriptionist do it the hard way. It's gonna be more expensive, but we've got everything in place to get the... That goes, is to give up access to that, uh... I think it's prudent that we move forward with, uh, just doing everything from scratch.
Can I ask, are you gonna do a resolution to do this, or, um, are you gonna just wait until to make another decision at another time?
I was looking for some discussion on this here, 'cause we're at, uh, let's see, seventeen months behind on minutes? Mr. McLaughlin seems to want to jam this down his throat his way, even though he was outvoted to do it differently. So we seem to have a stalemate, but yet I don't think anybody understands, uh... Number one, we've already been cited by the auditors. Uh, this is gonna draw the attention of the state. So, uh, we can kick the can down the road all you want, but the problem's just growing, not getting better. And this is trustee 101 stuff.
You wanna use, if you wanna use the recordings, you wanna use the transcripts, then take away the resolution. We expect me to pay for them. I've, it's already been done. You let me, you let me finish? So if you wanna use them, I'm not gonna let you use them and then pay you the money back. So if you wanna use them, that's fine, but take away the resolution. We expect me to pay that money back.
I can't sanction illegal transactions, Mr. McLaughlin. I'm not gonna endorse that.
It's not illegal tran- it was not an illegal transaction.
You acted on your own without approval, and you exceeded the purchasing authority of the township, so...
Wait, two, two, no.
And you used a per- so you used a personal credit card for it there. Either way, we're at a stalemate on getting the minutes done, so...
PO was signed by two trustees, and the check was signed by two trustees. You weren't involved, you were, you were not involved, so now you want control of it.
So, uh... Okay, well...
So let's spend more of the trustees', let's just spend more of the trustees' money. I mean, the resident's money. Whatever.
Just as a matter of record, the state has already got their eyes on us, so this is not gonna add anything else.
So, okay. Future meeting details, we discussed that in the, in the, uh, work session. Anything to add to that? Okay, moving on, new business. Uh, we've discussed the auditor's request to get signed. Do we have anything else to discuss on that, or can we close that issue out?
An amendment?
The, uh...
Go with your dress, if you're...
The amendment that needs to be signed for the additional, I think it's $900 for audit expense.
No, I, I, I would, Mr. Man asked, I don't know if you're away from your computer or not, that, um, that, um, everybody need to sign it, and I suggested that you just do what you did on the other two, the regular and amended one. Everybody sign it. That's up to you guys, though, but that's what I suggest, to be consistent.
I would agree with that. Okay, uh... Next, we discussed the, uh, Rosenbauer engine tanker that's, uh, used. Any more, do we need any more discussion on that before, before we face the resolutions? Okay, uh, same thing for the, uh, resolution authorizing administrator and fire chief to perform a RF, to set up an RFP. Anything, any other discussion on that? Okay.
Were we gonna get a, an attachment on that? Were we gonna get an attachment for that, for the, um, specifications on both those, or at least one of them, on both those fire engines?
Well, uh... Let's go ahead and get the discussion open on these resolutions, and let's, let's talk about that. Okay, with these, I guess the first question, trustees, if we're gonna need attachments to go with that, uh, can we present these resolutions tonight, or we do, we need to table them and have that page to it? Or are you comfortable with the specifications with the version of the resolution that's, uh, that we're gonna ultimately sign?
Well, is the fire chief gonna end up giving us the specifications that we're gonna put on here and give us a list of those so we can see those specifications? Then I'm, uh, good with, uh, go ahead and approving these and let him turn that document in. When he turns it in to us, let us take a look at it and go that route. If you guys agree to that.
But you're, so we're asking for a signature tonight without the attachment, though?
Well, what I'm trying to clarify is whether or not we even have, if, I gotta, okay, Mr. McLaughlin, are you, you want attachments to both these resolutions? So with what's prepared for us for the meeting, have specs, so that puts us in a position that both these need to be tabled. I personally think we can move forward for at least approve the, uh, resolution shop for this 2010 and, and have a mechanic check it out and cut a check for the $1,500 to posit, so it, the new, uh, engine proposal resolution, we can table that since it's gonna be a year and a half out anyway, so two more weeks is not gonna set back that project. But I think there's a sense of urgency with the seller to, to, you know, let's commit to going out and looking at that, and basically, all we're doing is evaluating it, and we can find the specs with it. We can throw the specs into that on a separate resolution or something, but I think if I'm hearing everybody else right, we need to get the ball rolling on whether or not we're gonna look at the, be serious player on buying this.
Yeah, okay, I agree. I agree.
So can I say something?
Yes.
You guys are gonna have to write this resolution if you decide or do another resolution, because most likely, in the past, when he goes down and looks at that, and he agrees he wants it, he gonna need that $1,500 check. Unless I have something that says $1,500, that you approve it, I'm not writing a $1,500 check for him to carry it down there. And I'm not doing any wire transfers.
Well, we can do a purchase rec and a PO for $1,500, uh, without a resolution, so...
Yes, you can, if he accepts that.
So, uh, trustees, are you on board with that? Thumbs up, comments?
Yes, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Let's go ahead. Tracy, do you, can you give us a resolution number?
Nineteen.
Okay, resolution number 21-019. The Jefferson Township authorized the purchase of a 2010 Rosenbauer engine tanker for the amount not to exceed, uh, $200,000 based on successful inspection of the vehicle and financing established. I move to adopt.
Are we in res- are we in resolutions or still in new business?
No, I went a, since we were discussing that, I went ahead and read off resolution to deal with the, uh, used fire truck issue that we were just talking about, so this feathers into our discussion. Next. On this?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Man. Okay. Any other discussions on this resolution? Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee, ma'am?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Chief Wright, when can you set up, uh, uh, $1,500?
What'd you say, Jim, 'cause you broke up?
You need to set up a purchase rec for $1,500 so we can get a PO going and get busy heading out. Was it St. Louis, or where we, where are you going for that?
Uh, uh, the bottom part of Missouri, Mount, uh, Mountain Grove. It is east of Springfield.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Man, do you want to give any more direction on this, or are we good?
I'm, I'm, I'm good. If, uh, chief needs, uh, anything from me, let me know. I'll...
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Um, the other resolution on it, uh, we'll let it scratch because it has to be rewritten with, uh, with specs. So I won't even bring that up unless, trustees, you want to introduce it and table it.
Um, Chief Wright, will these specifications, uh, will we have them by the next meeting?
Yes, you should. Uh, I've got a copy of the specs now. The only thing we gotta do is just write them off.
All right, um, on this next requisition, our, uh, resolution, 21-020, I would like to, um, go ahead and just table this resolution.
Okay. Resolution 21, 21-... Resolution twenty-one, twenty-one dash zero two zero has been tabled.
You're gonna need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, that concludes resolutions, department reports.
That's not all of new business, we weren't, we-
Captain Flag?
We were, we were not in resolutions, we were in, uh, new business, and you spoke of resolutions. Um, still, we still have another issue in new business to discuss.
Okay, we just voted on resolutions, but you wanna go back to new business?
That's what we were, the last, what's the last resolution on your paper for, uh, new business?
The proposal for the two thousand twenty-two engine tanker.
Well, it is, okay, uh, under the work session, we had, under the work session then, um, we're gonna talk about the, the request from the administrator, uh, to schedule a special meeting. Since this is a public meeting.
Okay, well, we discussed that, so if you wanna reduce that issue-
Well, I, I brought up, I brought up a topic that, of course, I got silenced, no, no comments made. But so, there was, in, there's, so, so, part of the public meeting, there's a request from the administrator to the trustees to schedule a special meeting for the sole purposes, under Higher Advice Code one two two dot two two, section G, to meet in executive session with legal counsel present, to consider the appointment, employment, and or promotion of township zoning administrator, office, support staff, and road workers that will be addressed in the township vacancies. So I brought up the fact that I have tried, since I've been a trustee, for four years now, we've never ever had an employee evaluation of our administrator. And I always get one reason or the other, we're sick, can't make the meeting. Um, you gotta, I gotta have legal representation, um, I gotta do all three trees trustees at once. Always have a reason of some sort or another, so this kinda fits all those reasons. It is, needs to be done, uh, for the residents, we need to have a, have, in this, uh, request for the administrators to have a trustee for executive session, we have legal representation. Let's have the, we also need to stick in there and word on the, in there and in the invite, the public invite, that we have an employee evaluation of our administrator that has never been done in this executive session.
Hey, General, Wolf gave us a-